Move for approval.
No citizens to be heard online. Move approval.
Second.
Turn my mic on. Very good. Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from February 28th.
Move approval.
Second.
Got approval by, excuse me, motion by Kevin, second by Dave. All in favor? Okay, we'll go with the annual department update. We're still in the water conservation district. Got Kevin Kastenberg representing them. Good morning, Kevin.
Is that working? Sorry. Anyway, good to see you all. I was going to give you an update on our Clay SWCD for 2022, and I see with Commissioner Kravonoff here, I think I'll pass off to him, being he was with us for 37 years, so take it away, Paul. Anyway, just wanted to be, give you a heads up on what we've been doing in the past year. It's always kind of exciting to come here and show you what we've done, and I've got a little PowerPoint that I put together. Our Clay SWCD staff, typically we have five, a staff of five. Right now, we're missing one with a retirement last fall. So we have four of us that are presently on staff. Amanda Lewis is our district coordinator. She basically keeps the books and runs our urban conservation program. Gabe Foltz is our district technician and county feedlot officer. If you remember, Craig was our district technician and feedlot officer. This role has been taken over by Gabe, so now we're looking for a district technician and a ag inspector role that we're hoping to fill here sometime soon. Anthony Nelson is our natural resources management technician. He does the, most of the wetland problems and projects that come through our office, also does our AIS coordinator for us, and also does a lot of our, just fill in the gaps where we need help with tree planting and that type of thing, and then myself. Then, like I say, our district technician, county ag inspector position is still open, so we're hoping if you know somebody that is looking for a position, I think we've got a good spot for them and a good staff to work with. Our tree program is primarily what we're probably known for. We just unloaded a, or about, almost 20,000 trees here, so we have Tony and Gabe taking a little break there. I'm sure Craig and I are still stacking stuff away, so that's just the way it works. We do provide site preparation, planting, and weed maintenance services, and in 2022, we sold a little over 16,000 trees to 160 customers. We planted for 23 customers and put on 10 and a half, almost 10 and a half miles of fabric or matting as a weed barrier over these trees. So if you haven't seen that in operation, you'll have to come and visit us sometime because it's quite, I'm not just going to say fun, but it's kind of interesting how it works. Our no-till drill program, we have two no-till drills that we offer to landowners. We've had this since 1993. We've advanced to providing it to over 35 landowners, which is something that's really taken off over the years, and we've been over, planted over 1,900 acres to landowners last summer and, spring and summer and fall, and our motto still is "You call, and we'll haul it to you." The Rim Reserve Conservation Enhancement Program, CREP as it's affectionately known, is a voluntary federal and state program. It's a perpetual easement that gets taken on parcels of land. Recently, we had, with the land sales going on this past year, how they have escalated, we worked with the county assessor, Nancy Gunderson, to assist us in producing some updated land prices on sales that have gone on. So the, in 2023 now, we have a updated land rate, I guess, that landowners can be paid for enrolling in parcels into the permanent easement. And in 2022, we finished up two easements, completing a little over 300 acres. Presently, we have probably 80 easements that are since 1986 when the program started, so, and a little bit less than 4,000 acres have been enrolled. Wetland Conservation Act, this is Tony, Anthony Nelson's program that he works with. Last year, we worked with, he worked with over 60 organizations and landowners to assist them with wetland concerns, whether it be filling, draining, I guess, anything to do with manipulating wetlands comes through our office, and also trying to avoid problems because there are some legal violations that can occur. We've been working with the Red River Diversion Project Authority, ag drainage and transportation infrastructure are primarily the roles that impact wetlands in the county. The Ag BMP, Best Management Practices Low Interest Loan Program, is handled through the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. Through us, we send out newsletters trying to entice landowners to, if there's a project that maybe they could be a low-interest loan that could be taken on, septic system upgrades are one thing that qualifies. Conservation tillage is another one that has been very popular. With our no-till drill rental program that we've offered, we probably have over 30 landowners that have rented from us and have gone on to buy their own no-till drills. Also, conservation tillage, though, you can see the picture with the tillage operation, keeping more residue on the surface is a huge erosion reduction, so that's something that we aim to do. Rather than planting or plowing like was very common years ago, keeping more residue on the surface is something that we adhere to and try to really promote. And with the equipment nowadays, equipment can handle a lot more residue on the surface, so like our no-till drills, they can take standing stubble and do a good job of planting right directly into that. County feedlot offered position, if you know, if you remember the last couple of years, we've been on probation with our MPCA partners. We have rectified that now. They require us to go back and recheck all of our spot checks that were in 2021, and we did that last year, so instead of doing seven, we have to do 7% of the feedlots that are registered in the county. So in recent years, it's been seven that we've had to go do, so we redid the seven from the previous year. We did the seven that were, we were on the hook for in 2022, and we passed all the, primarily it was the reporting system that we were having some concerns with, that MPCA didn't like what we were doing. And we've got that taken care of now, so we are back in good graces with them, so we're happy to report that. County ag inspector program, this is something that has been Gabe's position in the past. We're hoping to fill that position with somebody, but in the meantime, all of us are kind of taking this role on as far as assisting landowners with what are Minnesota's noxious weeds to be on the alert for, and there's a whole list of ones that need to be controlled by law. We also do landowners and commercial applicators that want to come in and get licensed. We do the examinations in our office. We did 45 of those last year. We also go through the process of training our township officials, which we will be doing next Monday during the County Association of Township Officers meeting. So there we'll be giving, after the officers, after their meeting, and the department heads give their presentations. We follow that up with a presentation on a workshop on what's changed in the Minnesota noxious weed law for the coming year, and landowners, there's a number of landowners that are assisting there that are also town board members that just need to be aware of what's going on in their respective townships. The buffer law, that was something that was passed in 2015. We were charged to basically put 50 feet average width of grass, some type of perennial vegetation along our wetlands and streams and rivers, and also public ditches required a 16 and a half foot or rod width along their ditches. We are 99, we're happy to report 99% in compliance with the public waters and 99% in compliance with the public ditches. We have a couple of ditches that the Buffalo Red River Watershed District is going through a hearing process to pay landowners for that land that is being taken out of production, and also they're out staking, taking surveys and stuff like that, so we hope to have everything done. We hope to be at 100% with the public ditches. There's a couple of wetland issues that are out there that I think DNR still has to make a determination that we're waiting on. Urban Conservation is something that's taken off in recent years since Mandy Lewis, our district coordinator, has taken the program on. She has worked with River Keepers, the city of Moorhead Community Ed Department, and we've hosted a number of workshops, whether it be compost tumblers or rain barrels, pollinator habitat workshops, and then also they did last year the first make and paint workshop. You can see one of the participants down there took a rain barrel and, or a garbage compost tumbler, and they did some painting for those things. We've also, this will be, last year was our fourth annual Pollinator Paint Night. That was held at Junkyard. Over 200 attendees were there, and primarily they get to taste a special pollinator-friendly beer, I guess we call it. Money Honey is what the Junkyard has come to, that they basically make cans that are available, also have it at the tap, and primarily it promotes our pollinator habitat. Funds go, any money that we make on that goes to your Crestwood site out there. And also, there was little planting stations for, you could plant your own little pollinator habitat, and a lot of little kids and stuff were shown out there to assist with that. The Crestwood Pollinator Habitat, which is the county's land that we buy out to portions, about eight acres. We held a pollinator site workshop out there where participants were looking at identifying different native species, and Tony in our office is a very good one for identifying different native plants. We also held a yearly cleanup out there. In May, we had volunteers from Houston Engineering and our staff, and we removed a truckload of garbage. It's amazing how much garbage collects on that darn site out there, and year after year. It's just amazing, but it was nice to have the county provide, Justin provided a truck out there that we loaded stuff onto and was taken to the landfill. And then also, we would be planting a second phase, we're calling with the tree planting. We'll be working with River Keepers and some volunteers to do some planting along that area out there this coming year. Walk-in access, this is a program through the Department of Natural Resources where we promote and try to get landowners to enroll property that will allow public hunting on it. Right now, we have eight sites in the county with over 1,600 acres enrolled. And primarily, what the landowners get, there is a cash payment, depending on how many acres they put in and for how long, long term, but if they are not, or they're not opposed to having public hunting on their property, this qualifies and allows those that don't have access to their own property to hunt. It's a little hunting area that, it's in Clay County that can be used for, like I said, there's a number of pheasant sites and also some deer on some of these areas, so it's kind of a good little promotional item that we work with. Aquatic Invasive Species Program, 2012, that program was transferred to us through, from the county. We do, we have a little fishing derby with the FM Walleyes. The River Keepers has a water festival in the fall. It's a seven-day event. Over 2,400 4th and 5th graders come through there that we have stations set up there. We also pay for some billboards that we have throughout the county, a couple of those, if you've noticed them around. We also have some promotional items that, coasters, bait bags, some can cozies, some other promotional items that we've worked with. And Clay County doesn't have a whole lot of lakes in the county. We have four lakes that basically have a public access, so us in comparison to Detroit Lakes, it's a much different county, but we're, like I say, trying to get the word out to prevent the aquatic, spread of aquatic invasive species is primarily education on our part. Each year, we select a outstanding conservationist from the county. Last year was Rob and Lana Olson and their daughter Carrie. They are very, very top-notch farmers that we, and very much cutting-edge with some of the ingenious things that they've come up with. Carrie has been as a speaker for a number of our farmer panels that we've had. She is a good speaker and a lot of fun to work with, all the whole family. But some of the items that they work with practices, no-till, water and sediment control basins, pollinator habitat, the MAWQCP, which is Minnesota Ag Water Quality Certification Program, the CREP program, and then precision agriculture. They got to go along with us to our state annual conference in the Twin Cities back in December, where they were given the award at that time also. One Water, One Plan, this is something that has really come to the forefront in recent years. We have two different practices shown here. One is a towed sod, basically the erosion around the riverbanks there. The DNR is a big proponent of using bioengineering material, so instead of allowing rock and that type of thing in the river anymore, that's a tough sell. They are looking at more using vegetative, so trees, branches, basically sod, it is basically kind of a natural material to reinforce the banks there. The one on the right there, we had a landowner that was, his house was being impacted, something called a J-hook, and it's the first one that we put in in the county. The DNR, who we used to approve and permit, things we used to call stream barbs, that would be little rocks, little dams that would jut out in the stream. They don't like those anymore. There's too much rock apparently in those. So they want these J-hook design, and it requires a five to six-foot diameter rocks to be placed in, and you can kind of see them strategically. There's two of them on this photo there, but they jut out into the stream, and basically they prevent the current from hitting, the river current from hitting the stream bank and forcing that current to the outer, or to the inner bank is the idea behind them. But with those size rocks, it increases the cost of the project immensely, so those are things that we're fighting with. I shouldn't say fighting, but we're trying to get the old stream bar projects that we used to get permitted to allow those. Like I say, it just gets to the point where these get so expensive that it's cost prohibitive. Other One Water, One Plan practices, cover crops, keeping your soil armored over the growing season and also after the season. So things like perennial rye is one that's been a good one for planting in those areas. Also, on the bottom picture there, the water and sediment control basins, you can see the left picture, it's a gully or near Holly that was causing problems for the landowner. He could not cross that area with his equipment. So a water and sediment control basin basically comes in and puts a tile line that follows along that gully down to a safe outlet. It is then filled, that gully is filled in, and then you can see in the right bottom right there is, you can see the tile line being installed, and then the one on the further right there, you can see, it's hard to see, hard to get a good picture of these things, but there is actually a dam that is put up across that old gully. It's sloped, so the farmer can actually farm those, it's back-sloped, so it's, so it can be farmed, and it basically retains about 40, up to a 40-acre watershed behind that dike, and then is safely drained out through a tile line. So like I say, it's something that it'll be, it'll be cropped and you won't even know the difference, but those have really caught on in recent years. We've got 11 of those sites that we've got that were installed in the past year, so Becker County has been very active in those, and it seems to be catching on in Clay County. Couple other sites that we have worked on it with One Water, One Plans. You can see there's a gully from the left-hand side there from, it's up near the Buffalo River. We shaped that up, put a big pipe in there, and it has been seeded down to grass in that swale area. Also, on the bottom photos there, you can see a farmer's field where it was basically allowed to drain directly into our ditches. Sediment filling in the ditches requires to go back in there and clean those out, whether it be a back hole or scraper of some kind to go in there. And a kind of a simple fix in there is to put a pipe in there and then put a top over the pipe, and it meters out the water, so it, like I say, the sediment is dropped out behind the pipe on the field side, so it doesn't get into your ditches. And like I say, those are getting to be things that I think we have numerous places that we can use those in the county. So between the two watersheds, that's the Buffalo Red River Watershed District and the Wild Rice Marsh Watershed District, in the last couple of years, we've put in over 300, almost $350,000 worth of projects of cost-sharing dollars to landowners from our One Watershed, One Plan Fund, about a quarter of a million, and in that, we can partner with the NRCS's equip program to get landowners up to 90% cost-sharing for putting the erosion practices, and they've come up with about $100,000 for their part in the program. And last fall, we had, on September 8th, we had our fall tour. We try to do this about every two years. COVID has had some impacts on that in the last couple of years, but last year we did, we went and saw a number of these sites that we just saw on the previous slides, as well as a demonstration on that matting installation. And let's see, at the time, we had, we'd invited our legislators, four that were presently running for our state office, showed up, and two that were successful, both Senator Rob Kupec and Representative Jim Joy were in attendance. Then last December 8th, we had a legislative briefing. The SWCDs in the state are really trying to get in the governor's or the state's general fund, and Paul, I know, can talk a lot about the SWCD aid. Last fall, we had a presentation that we made to our legislators. Rob Kupec was there, Jim Joy was there, Senator Ekin Markort, and Frank was in attendance. And basically, our focus was to let them know what the SWCD aid is, and we're hoping for their support. Then on the bottom right, there, then MASWCD President Paul Kravonoff was presenting to Paul Markort the MASWCD Legislator of the Year Award, so it was kind of a nice event, I guess. And last week, we met with our legislators, Senators Kupec and Mark Johnson, as well as Representative Heather Keeler, Deb Keel, and Jim Joy, basically kind of trying to get them in support of our SWCD aid for this year, so we'll see where that goes. Thank you. Questions?
I was just going to comment on the last slide you had up there. That was one of the best presentations. It was a very good presentation. You gave it that time, so anybody that missed out on that, missed out on a good presentation. I mean, you gave a good one again today. Thank you. And it was just a good program you had.
Thanks, Frank. Like I say, it was really fun last week with the legislators, and especially Representative Joy and Senator Kupec. They definitely were all on our, gosh, they were along on our tour, and that, there's a few things that made impressions on them, so that was all, it was all well worth our time, but it was good to get to meet them all. Fun to get to meet Senator Mark Johnson and Representative Keel. They just moved into our area here, three townships wide, so I think getting to know who we are a little bit is only beneficial to us too, so.
Kevin, I just want to, if you could give thank you to your crew there that's been working on the problems that we had with the feedlot issues. It sounds like that's well on its way to getting back to normal, even though I'm not so sure that, from our standpoint, there was ever anything wrong.
We didn't think so either.
You're right, you're right. And I raised that issue, and I think it became more of a technicality on how you read reports. But anyway, it sounds like that's back to doing well, and whoever's been working on that, and I'll give them a big thank you from us, so.
We'll do so. Thank you.
I'll make a final comment. Just going back to the SWCD aid, just to let you know that certainly the Association of Minnesota Counties strongly support what you're doing, and for the rest on commission here, it's a matter of having funding in place that will be run through the Department of Revenue as aid, rather than every year waiting in the omnibus bill for legislators to give some water districts their state allocation. So the whole point of it is, and we've been working on it for years, in my last four years with the water, I worked a lot, working with legislators and state agencies, trying to see the need for this so that when it comes to the hiring of people to do these projects that we just have, we call it stable funding, and that's reliable, so that as we have employees, they know that there's money going to be in place for longevity of their jobs. And also, we've seen rightly through the One Watershed, well, the Legacy Act that was put into place constitutionally in 2008, all that money that now goes into the Clean Water Fund, you know, we're doing, well, your numbers grow every year, the amount of projects that we put in, whether it's just through the local SWCD on its own, through grants, or non-competitive grants through, you know, Buffalo, or watershed districts and through counties. Just know you're supportive, that I think it will pass. I'm very optimistic. It's just a matter of what amount, right? But at least the amount that they're talking about right now is what we have, but certainly, I think SWCDs would like to see that grow, so I hope you're successful.
I knew I should let you run with this thing.
No.
Any other comments? And thank you so much for running a great department there, Kevin.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
And now for our star candidate for the county, our veteran service officer.
I see the meeting room is all full for me, and everybody took the day off. Did I just hit the arrow? All right. You can see I don't do much of this anymore. Morning, Chair Commissioners Kurt Cannon, Clay, Veteran Service Officer for Clay County. Just a little bit about our office. We specialize in counseling, advising, and assisting veterans, widows, and dependents with claims, federal, state, and county agencies, to secure them any benefits where they may be reasonably entitled to under laws and statutes, so. We serve as a liaison between federal, state, and county VA benefits and programs. We advocate and are nationally accredited, me and Jennifer are. We advise you and your dependents of your rights and entitlements under various federal and state laws, actively changing all the time. We assist filling out forms and papers and retaining documents and affidavits. We work in partnership with the Minnesota Department of Veteran Affairs, VA Claims Office, VA Medical Centers, national service organizations, and other public and private agencies. Just highlights of, general highlights of what we do in our office, not everything that we do, but we start out with pensions for veterans. We educate and train, we provide home loan guarantees, and that's just the application for the home loan. We send that to St. Paul. We apply for life insurances for them. Most of these are just applications that we assist filling out for them and sending them to the proper agency. We provide burial and memorial benefits with awards and medals, health care, and disability compensation is probably 80% of our time. And just to expand on that, that's a service connection for a disability that occurred while in service, or they think it occurred while in service, and if they become granted service connection, it can range from a 0% to 100%, with compensation, with monetary compensation back to the veterans, starting at 10%. And I believe that's 160 a month, all the way up to 30, 600 a month at 100% disabled with the VA. So they do get compensated for a certain percentage of their time. And I say that for later on, and you'll understand some of the percentages, so. 2022, we had an admin assistant, Bonnie. She went full-time, so that puts us to three FTEs in our office. We did attend finally face-to-face national training in San Antonio to get our national accreditation CEUs. We continue and have been participants in the Clay County Veterans Court and the local Beyond the Yellow Ribbon organization. We just had one graduate right now in Veterans Court last week, so we are, we don't have any participants now, but I'm sure we will. On top of all our current stuff, Blue Water Navy claims, original stuff, they added the PACT Act. This expands and extends eligibility for VA health care for veterans with toxic exposure, for veterans for Vietnam, Gulf War, and post-9/11 era, so basically, they added a couple presumptuous. So basically, they added a couple presumptives, meaning that it's conceded by the VA for Vietnam vets, and then we added Gulf War presumptives, mostly breathing issues for burn pits, toxic exposure, so. Now they can, now we can, so when they add something like that, then vets come and we claim those on top of the other claims. Presumptives are pretty easy. You just have to have the diagnosis and the time at Southwest Asia or Vietnam, so. So we put all that together and claim. Then 9/11 bonus came out in 2022, legislature passed, and Governor Walz signed the first ever Veterans Bill that included funding for a service bonus payable to eligible veterans who served after 9/11/01. The 600 is a veteran that the requirements was entered active duty as a resident of Minnesota and currently live in Minnesota. Those are the two requirements. To get the money, if you didn't have the medals, like you had a service medal, meaning you supported Iraq or Afghanistan or Southwest Asia, but wasn't actually boots on ground, you got the 600. And then if you had the medals that supported your time in service and boots on ground, you got the 12. And then the family member could get a $2,000 one if they were killed in action. We also, along with Social Security, received a largest increase in 30 years, the 8.7% increase in our monthly compensation payments, so that was a nice bump for our veterans. A little background, so little numbers, I suppose the, to measure success, I guess, we have some numbers for you. Thirty-five, 3,549 veterans in Clay County. The State Soldiers Assistance Program, which includes a vet coming in to us, and either they need dental grant, a home repair grant, shelter, optical, auto, medical, utilities, or education grants, we apply for those for them. Little comparison, Anoka County has 19,764 vets, they did 22,529 awarded to them. We have five times less, four times less, 3549, we did 45,000 awarded, so we doubled Anoka, which is actually putting it out, asking the questions, visiting with the vet, determining what they need, and then utilizing our resources that we know are available and getting what they need, so. 381 claims in 2022 for 1,431,000. Retroactive payments for our vets, meaning that we, they took long, they took a long time to get, they were backdated to a certain period of time, and they received a lump-sum payment, that was 979,133 dollars for vets. Property tax exemption, this where it comes to percentage, you can only get this property tax exemption in Clay County or Minnesota, being 70% or higher. So 70%, disabled is a difficult task in itself, but you can get it all the way after 70%. And at 70% to 100%, you get $150,000 exempt off your market value of your house in Clay County. And 100% permanent total, which is your total disabled, you can get 300,000 off your market value. So it's a big deal, big benefit, cuts their house payment down or their escrow. The city parcels in 16, I go from 16 because I started at the end of 15, the city parcels was 124 exemptions to 254 exemptions in 2022. So we doubled that, which is extremely hard to do, so. County parcels were 76 in 16 to 162 this year, this last year, so. Hopefully, they don't let go of the program because all their vets are exempt from property tax, but it's nice to have that benefit. Veteran contacts per office visits, phone calls, emails, communications, might be a little light because Kurt doesn't chart very well, but I like to talk a lot but forget to chart, but 4,901 contacts in 2022. And knowing that each of these contacts require research and work, they go in, the saying in our office, does he have a couple minutes? You know, it turns out to a couple hours, so. But each one requires hour, two-hour, three, four-hour work, so a lot of contacts with these vets. Average is about 16 to 20 contacts a day for us, and, which is extremely busy, so. That's all I have, the vets in Clay County. I've hopefully been taken care of, and we have resources and everything at our fingertips and available to our vets, so we try to listen and determine what they need and service them the best way we can, so that's our goal for every vet. I appreciate your guys' support, most definitely.
Well, it looks like you contacted quite a few people here. Any comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
I do have one question. Is any real estate tax exemptions that grow, I'm curious, is that just, is part of that disability, part of, of saying aging, you know, just as a result of things such as aging, or you shall, or?
Could.
And the other question is, do you see some migration from birth to death, or do that, or do you think it's more with the?
Yeah. First of all, the disability could increase with aging. You know, we first get that, let's just go with hearing, very, very kind of easy claim, but not too easy because you have to have audiograms in service, but you get a 0% when they're, you know, 50 years old, and we look at, some of them are now 60, 70%, because they're in their 70s, and hearing does deteriorate. So you can be non-property tax and go into a property tax because of aging. So they do increase over time, and your bones, your knees, your joints, they're going to get worse, too, so. But we do have to put it in for increases. You don't get those automatically, so the vet has to return to us saying, hey, my hearing's worse, so then we'll put them in for an increase. The VA won't just come and increase you, so. And then the property tax, you have to be aware, because that's also an application with our county and city, with myself, too, so. There are vets, unfortunately, that probably don't have that benefit because they weren't followed through with, but we follow through with every award that we get to make sure they get their benefits associated with that percentage. Migration, yes, yes, being so close to North Dakota. There is a 30-day residential rule for benefits, for state benefits. You have to reside in Minnesota, so that kind of helps us. Are we going to help a vet that comes over from North Dakota? Absolutely. You know, we want to, we'll help them from Becker and Wilken and anybody, you know, it's just their situation, so. At the end of the day, we're here eight, eight and a half hours, and might as well serve who comes through the door, so. A lot of migration and a lot of going back the other way, too, you know, so. And a lot of county jumping, and you have to try to get them back to their county, and, but then they move, or there's just certain situations, but there's a lot of floating
Thank you for that. I just think it's a valuable.
Yes. Great asset, great resources. Minnesota supports their vets tremendously. If you live in Minnesota and you haven't utilized or, I mean, we pride ourselves, Clay County, on zero homeless, too, but I do say identified homeless folks, you know, because they have to be identified before we can act, but, you know, so. Clay County has Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, the Merrick Legion, the VFW, and our office, so if you see a vet, send them our way, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Plus, we have a little font in our office, so. Check out our website. I appreciate your guys' support, though. It means a lot.
No, you do a great job.
We can go forward. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Keep up the good work.
Have a good day.
Yeah. Okay, now, a little bit past nine o'clock, but we got a bid opening for a project for County CASA 18.
Yeah, good morning. So this is a bid opening for the Mill and Overlay in Colden Place recycling job on CASA 18. It does run from 80th Street to Trunk Highway 9, six miles. We did receive five bidders. All of them are complete bids with a bid amount in the amount of 5%. The first bidder we did receive is Central Specialties out of Alexandria. Their bid is $3,348,602.56. The second bid we received was Knife River Materials. Their bid is $3,277,115.21. The third bid we received was Border States Paving. Their bid was $3,245,962.15. The fourth bid was Markson and Gravel. Their bid was $3,149,609.46. And the last bid we received was RJ Zaverell and Sons. Their bid was $2,963,831.80.
Okay.
I do feel that we did receive five very good bids on this project, and I would recommend approval contingent upon state aid approval, because there is LRIP funding on this project. We received an $800,000 grant. And this did come in, I don't know if you saw the sheets in your packet for tabbing, it did come in a little bit underestimated.
This is the first time I saw them come in so close, all from the top to the bottom, that they've been that close to each other, it's just.
It's crazy how sometimes they can be that close. We've had some bids be within $100 on a couple million dollars before.
These are pretty close for a pretty broad, yes, Kevin?
Thank you. Justin, are you, is there any concern about past performance on?
No, so last summer, RJ Zaverell did both CASA 12 and CASA 52. Both projects were done well ahead of schedule, and I thought turned out really, really well.
There was a project prior to that that there had been some question on, that's why I raised.
Yep. No, I thought last summer they did an awesome job, and two projects that turned out really, really well.
Mr. Chair, I would move the, a little bit of RJ Zaverell and Sons, subject to review.
Second.
We've got a motion by Kevin, second by Dave, to approve RJ Zaverell and Sons for the, for the project. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, and the second item I have is approval to advertise for our yearly supply bids. So our yearly supply bids include gravel, bituminous, culverts, and construction equipment. So the bids will be, the proposed letting date will be April 20th at the Highway Department. We open those at the Highway Department, so we have five days before to tabulate everything and bring a packet for board approval on the 25th.
Okay.
May I motion to approve the advertising on the yearly supply bids?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Paul, second by Kevin, to approve the advertising for the yearly supply bits. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Joe, now for your update for facilities maintenance.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Yes, I'm giving my yearly update here. I tried not to get into the weeds here and touch on all the highlights for you, so. Just first off, our mission is to operate, maintain, and preserve the physical asset of Clay County facilities. We provide quality service in an efficient, professional manner in order to create and maintain a clean, safe, and comfortable environment for all staff, clients, and citizens here at Clay County, so we do our best. Currently, right now, with our staff, we have one operations supervisor, one administrative assistant, maintenance technicians, we have seven full-timers and one variable hour. Custodians, we have seven full-time, two permanent part-time, and 12 variable hour. We have one custodian lead and one facilities director. Currently, here are all our facilities that we operate here or have a hand in doing. Law enforcement center, correction facility, courthouse, family service center, juvenile center, power plant, resource recovery, government center, rental house, northwest lot up there, DMV lease space, we do some cleaning out there, cold storage building highway, we just put that up last summer, landfill joint highway facility, and all the shops in Barnesville, Glendon, Felton, Uland, Comstock, and Georgetown for the highway, and the storage facility that we just purchased, and a couple years ago now, but, and then the Future Substance Abuse Center we are currently working on, so. Here is just a little snapshot. I know some of you have seen this before, but wanted to show you how we've been busy since 2018, so as you can see, we opened the jail in the summer. Jail and the LEC entered into a master plan study in 2019. We had some issue, or some space issues with the courts, so we started talking about that. COVID hit, and then we ended up changing things, and juvenile center expansion was done in the spring of 2020. We relocated the DMV into the fall of 2020 over into the mall, completed the boardroom in winter of 2020, and purchased a government center in spring of 2021. And that summer, we purchased the storage building, ended up selling the old DMV lot to the city, and there was some storage up there, so that's why we bought that. And completed the new courtroom six across the hall in the fall of 2022, which they're now using, and wrapped up on the Resource Recovery Center in winter of just a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, so. Construction begins on the new substance use crisis center this spring, and we're starting to talk about the DMV future planning, so just wanted to throw that timeline out there for a visual and a snapshot, I guess, so. Just a quick update on the family service center. As you know, it's an enterprise fund. Right now, we bring in, we bring in an estimated revenue yearly of 1.2 million, just over 1.2 million, and through rent, we do that by charging everybody on the first floor tenants, 1375 a square foot, and we, second through fifth, is 1275 a square foot, so. Right now, we are 60% of the building is occupied by Clay County departments, and 40% is occupied by nonprofit agencies. Right, right now, the building is 100% occupied, and we continue to take a lot of calls about people wanting space, so it's not a problem to fill that building, so. Wrapped up on a fourth floor project update, this past year, we moved child support up to the fourth floor and opened up some space on the first floor to allow Dental to do an expansion project there. Currently, right now, their bids are opening at the end of the month, and we hope to start in the spring here for them, so. Lobby improvement project, we updated from floor to ceiling, all the way from first floor up to the fifth floor, the main lobbies, and those are all complete, so. Got a five to 10-year financial plan, is my goal this year, is to meet with the Building Finance Committee to just take a deeper look into the building. There's not huge concerns, but it's not a moneymaker either, and just one of my goals is to meet and just take a look at that the next 10 years, so. Usually, we get one major issue of an MCIT claim. We did get one this last June. Usually, we get one major issue of an MCIT claim. We did get one this last June. We had a sprinkler, what would you call it? Rain leader under the ground broke and flooded the first floor, a little piece of the first floor there, but working with MCIT on that. And then County Department Space Needs, we continue to have some of that. We're going to be, we're vetting through that with the Building Committee as we speak. And then just a budget note, natural gas increase has been pretty rough on, on that facility and all facilities, actually, but we did increase that line last year to account for some of that, so. Okay. Just a update on the fleet management. As you remember, about a year ago, we ended up entering into a contract with, with Enterprise, ordered to lease all vehicles. We just actually received that now, so. Wanted to give you guys a real time of our numbers here. They had a five-year plan on how to save, you know, X amount of dollars, but this is kind of the real plan I wanted to show you. On the left, you're going to see all the old vehicles that we currently have now. Now that they're all showed up, we're starting, we're going to start selling these off. And so this is just kind of how this has worked out. We have a proposed, you know, the old vehicles that we now have are going to be sold. We have estimated of just over a hundred and eleven thousand, and these are numbers that are given through Enterprise, what the, what the cars are worth. And so we're going to estimate that much, and that'll go into Fund Fifty-two, and that is the, the fund that helps sustain this. That's the fund that, that does this fleet, so. And then, as you can see on the right side, we have an annual lease payment of around seventy-one hundred, or not annual, monthly, and then the annual is eighty-six thousand. And we pay for this by every time somebody rents a vehicle, whether it's social services or somebody, they pay thirty-five cents a mile, and then that goes into Fund Fifty-two. Talking with Lori, we do have a, she is proposing that we up that this year during the budget to a fifty, a fifty cents. She, it has been many years, so she's feeling that's appropriate. So, but yeah, that's what that is. Another thing to note here, too, is when we first signed this agreement a year ago, we had a proposed of nine traverses. As we did a study on this over the year, COVID never bounced back. Really, we felt we didn't, the, the use of the cars went down, and it has never bounced back. So we actually de-fleated three traverses and have not had a problem at all. So that was kind of one thing we wanted to, we wanted to lean out this program, not have the ability for someone to get a car whenever they want, but not have too many cars sitting here that are brand new. So.
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, Joe, thank you. So when we went, before we had gone to the leasing of all of these vehicles, we would do the purchase of the vehicles, and we would have the annual amount that would be put into the Internal Service Account.
Yep.
So in comparison to, you know, so, so we can kind of keep a gauge on,
Yep.
on is leasing working for us from a fiscal responsibility standpoint?
Yep.
Is there a way that we can go back and, and look at what our annual payments were to our, our Internal Service Fund on an annual basis and compare that to the far-right column here?
Yes, yes. And I know one of Enterprise, one of Enterprise's pitches to us, too, was every year they would, they would help with, they supposedly, this five-year savings they're going to do, they, they have a way of telling us every year how we're hitting our mark. But yes, but we can do that, too.
Well, I think one of the easiest ways to hit our mark is to see how, see how much cash went out this year versus how much we're doing before.
Yeah, it, yeah, it is definitely easy to just do that, exactly. So, and then, like you say, de-fleeting was a thing because I thought we were heavy that way, you know, too.
That, that makes sense.
That, three traverses was quite a bit of money, so I felt that was good. But one thing to note, too, is, is for some of you that weren't involved in this, the, when we make that lease payment, we get the equity back. So it's not your conventional lease. It's, it's other than a small fee from Enterprise, we, we get it back. So in, in two to three years, when we get these vehicles up at that sixty, seventy thousand mark, the goal is to, they say the goal is to sell it at that time and recapture that high-value resale, and then roll that back into our Fund Fifty. So if we own these, if we make payments past four years, we actually own the vehicle, and that's not what we want to do because apparently that's your threshold, the losing money when you make too many payments past four years. So. I'm still trying to understand this a little bit better, but yeah, so we do get that equity back every time we make a payment, too. So. Yeah, so I'm hoping, hoping, I, I actually want this to be a yearly update in my budget as well, just as a presentation.
And then, and then one final question on, on this subject. So the, the, the amount that each of these vehicles under our prior process, again, we had the Internal Service Fund, and they, and that each of those line items would build a value.
Right.
That was actually a cash value that we'd have in reserves.
Yes, yes.
Is, are there any of those, you'll have to talk to Lori about this, but are any of those reserve dollars left? And could, if so, because there, we're under this lease system where there's no, there's no need to carry a.
Right, a balance, right, because it should.
So, so is there a way that we could shift that to another need?
Right.
I'm, I'm not sure that there's anything left or not.
Yep, I'll check with Lori. I know prior to this, we were actually leasing like six vehicles, too. So we had kind of a split weird thing going on there, but I'll, I'll dive into that and check in to see what that is, so, and have an update for you on that, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep. So that's the fleet management update there.
Just a minute, Joe.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a real quick, if I can follow up. So it's a whole new fleet, it looks like.
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-three's, right?
Yes.
Do you, do you run a rotation then, or is it all, I mean, or is it a mileage thing?
Yeah, yeah. So all these fleets that you see here get checked out by request, the employee will, will request it. So, yes, and if, what we do, too, is we'll watch. If one car gets used too much, we'll, we'll, we'll schedule another one to get the miles, because we want to use them all, kind of, you know, so, yeah. Yep.
It kind of goes to Kevin's, it's the cash flow issue, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure that it's all holding in line. It doesn't stack up one year.
Yes, exactly. And we, yeah, and we, we just feel that, like you say, we did feel like we were a little heavy on our, on our fleet, just because we can actually see that by how much is scheduled on a daily amount and how much miles are put on cars. So, 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 yeah, we did, one of the benefits, we've, we received a lot of concerns with the old fleet, that we had vans and we had cars. Those are kind of the two big mixtures. And so we went to a Trailblazer, which is a lot safer. So we've gotten a lot of compliments on both the Traverse and the Trailblazer, so, so. And with the Traverse, reason why we went with that is it, it does have a better resale value in three years, too. So it's a little bit more than a van, but we're going to hopefully sell more and recapture a higher value on that. And so, my first year doing this, so I'm hoping to iron out the wrinkles, so.
All right. Dave?
Yeah, just, I noticed, why is that one Trailblazer a hundred dollars more per month than the others?
Uh, you found an error. So, yes, so, good catch. So, yeah, that's not right. So they're all, they're all five fifty.
Okay.
They are, so, good catch. So I'll make sure I change that, so. But yeah, these are all of them. Of course, we know the sheriffs have went with, with this fleet program, too, as well. The goal was to have, I couldn't lease without, I couldn't, I have to have twenty cars or they won't lease to me. So the sheriff on board now has helped me a little bit on that, but I, with the flexibility, I can de-fleet a little bit now that we're working with that fleet as well. So, so. Any more questions on the fleet? All right, just a, just a quick update, capital improvements. We took out a bond of three point three million, just over three point three million. We were granted ARPA funds of just over one point two million, with a total of, we did thirty-two projects. I would say in this past year, a lot of that happened, within the last two years, for sure. Projects left that we have, just an update, Eulon Shop, we are, we're, we're starting in April there. That building came late, so we'll have that done by the summer. Salt Sand Tent, joint project through MinDOT. That is supposed to happen in the spring here as well. Cold Storage is built and complete, other than a little bit of concrete work inside there that has to be done in the spring. Power Plant Generator is in Barnesville right now, which is good news. So that is supposed to happen here sometime in the spring, too. And then Comstock and Georgetown, we just have a couple driveways to do in front there. And that's, yeah, so hopefully we'll wrap everything up this spring and be done with the capital improvement plan there, so. All right, and just a huge thank you to our custodian, custodian staff. They show up daily, and it's, every night they come, they get the place cleaned up. So. Janelin Roethlisberger is our custo, our custodian lead. We created that position a couple of years ago to support Brian Friedrich, our operations guy, and she provides a lot of the, the supervision at night with our custodians, and she just is amazing. So I wanted to thank her. Of course, Brian and the maintenance crew, and Betty, my assistant, she's gone this week, so I'm feeling, I'm feeling it big time. And just, just to thank you, the Building Committee, they guide me in all these projects we've done, and I appreciate them. And the County Board has approved a position in 2023 for a new maintenance, maintenance guy, and then a couple of variable hours were turned into full-timers for custodians, so we've seen that major positive impact. So I, we appreciate it, and it doesn't go unnoticed, so. With that, a yield for any questions? Any more questions?
Are you full staff now?
Yes, yep, full staff. Yep, everybody, maintenance and custodians, so.
Good, yeah.
Yep.
Kevin?
Joe, any surprises with our new Resource Recovery Facility?
No, nothing. Couple garage door, little quirks, but we've got that fixed, but nothing yet, so.
Yeah, most recent winter storms we've had, snow been an issue out there at all?
Nothing, a little bit of the scale, buildup under the scale, but Corey and I are planning, working a, a way to handle that, so. Other than that, no, nothing. City of Moore has been clearing the snow, and it's been going well so far, so.
Thank you.
Good to hear. Very good. Any other questions? Not, thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you, Board.
Joe, I'd imagine you're gonna, your snow removal budget is getting close to probably being.
Yes, that is at max right now.
Okay, with that, we'll go into committee reports. Dave, you want to start us out today?
Sure. On March eighth, last Wednesday, had a meeting with Kimberly Savageau as a recorder, referenced her office and the activities that she is going to come before us in her annual report, I believe, next week. And just a few topics that she, she wanted to talk about. And that was followed up by a compliance fund meeting, and we are in full compliance, and as usual, Kimberly has kept us in line with state expectations. That'll all be presented by her, I think, in a week or two weeks. On Thursday, the next day on the ninth, attended the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Meeting. We didn't get an agenda that week, so I'm going to have to do this by memory. I know there were conversations about the PACDAC and the nine-eleven bonuses. And as Kirk Cannon indicated, anybody who feels like they may be eligible for those should get ahold of Kurt. That, that the bonus is going to be in place, or I know they've extended some of it out for further applications. Later that day, I attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority Meeting. Covered a couple of different topics there. We did have a presentation regarding the estimates on, on the cost of the facilities being built. It has come in high. Eric Johnson and Mary Philippi both addressed that. As it looks, the City of Morehead, or City of Fargo and West Fargo are going to be in consultation with Cas County in regards to the offset for the overage that it came in. Morehead and Clay County are locked in at a set amount, which is one point five for Clay County and one million for City of Morehead. So that doesn't directly impact us. We looked at the facility lease, and again, that was addressed by Mary Philippi and Eric Johnson. And we had a discussion on the backup site, and that is a work in progress. At this point, at least in the short term, they could keep the current location of the dispatch center up and running as a backup, but long-term, that really is not a something we want to do, given the value of the property, and the lack of desirability for that location as a dispatch center. So there's going to have to be kind of an ongoing effort to identify what the best option is on a backup site. And then yesterday, Commissioner Krabbenhoff and I met with Joe Rasso with the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC. Part of that conversation, or the majority of that conversation, was looking at pending legislation. If it didn't pass yesterday, it's probably going to pass because it's come out of committee and has gone with unanimous vote in the North Dakota State Legislature, allowing a job development authority to be established within municipalities or counties in North Dakota, and allowing them to pass up to four mills in property taxes. And we're looking at that. Cas County's indicated a strong desire to do that. The composition of the Board of Directors of, of that JDA would be members of the EDC. And there's been a recognition that Minnesota has members on the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC and would be included in that if we can come up with a joint powers agreement. And we had a general discussion on that, the pluses and minuses, and again, that's just a heads up. It's something we're going to have to work on over time as, as this develops. And that completes my report.
Okay. Paul?
Glad to be back after being away for a week. I did want to go back to a, a meeting I had on March second. I don't think there was any reporting on it. So I went to, I was part of, got my orientation. I was part of the Clay County Collaborative. And then we had a meeting that followed that. And that, that collaborative is in a position right now where they're working with two people keep coordinating the whole program. And those two have been on staff for many, many years, and, and they're needing a replacement. So anyway, the majority of that meeting was, in fact, coming up with the, the guidelines and the description for a new, new coordinator, and it was approved to have a salary around roughly thirty thousand dollars. So increased about six thousand from what these others were doing. That salary is paid by ten percent of the state grants that come in through LCTS, which is local collaborative time study. And, and right, and so if that holds as it has been, that should cover that salary amount. If it doesn't, if it's a little short, the other thing, discussion was, do we go back to looking at fees for that program? Right now, current fees are a hundred dollars, and I think the county's at two fifty, and my understanding was four positions. So we'll remain, we'll see what remains. The idea, the fee, potential fee increase was going to go on to the, this is a governance committee, or board, I should say, and it was going to go on to the Policy Board to have a greater discussion about any type of fee change. But anyway, just know that that's moving forward, and it's, the work being done, it's coordinators, again, being done by two people that have been doing it for a long time. So they're excited. they're excited about the amount of attention going toward this collaboration and, and the fund requests, and Clay County does quite well statewide, so just run a report on that. Commissioner Abiger mentioned the EDC meeting we had yesterday. I thought the potential, what they were talking about, my first conversation about it, I thought it had, certainly has value and, and the momentum, certainly that North Dakota carries in the workforce development area for our whole area will certainly, you know, has an effect on Clay County, too, so we'll see where that goes. Certainly, my view at this point looks favorable. Last night, I went to the Buffalo Red Watershed District, their monthly meeting, just a few things to report, continuing work is going on, not work, excuse me, study, and, and cleanup work on Project Eighty, the Stony Creek, and, and then Eric with Houston continues to look and see some pathways coming ahead, you know, for potentially, excuse me, two million dollars, which I don't know if that means this year or next year, but that may help with possible retention in that area on lands that aren't currently ag. They're right on the east side of the interstate, and we'll see how that develops. They approved, going back to our March, no, the meeting before March, maybe it was February twenty-eighth meeting, if you all remember, we made that half payment for the FEMA study to Houston, and that we, we approved, you know, paying half of that, roughly seventeen-thousand, five-hundred dollars of, of that, that overage to Houston, and the Buffalo Red approved the other half last night, so that's done. Then also, we gave Jerry Van Ambergh as part of that Morehead-Clay County Group, JPA, for the money that we told the group that we were going for money or bonding, you know, the thirty-six million that on the county share. So that was brought out, that we had given that on to Representative Joy. I apologize, I can't remember, who's the Senate author on that, you know?
He's from, he represents a small part, at this point, it's. Huh?
You talking about Mark Johnson, or?
Did Mark?
Yes.
Oh, did Mark? Oh, okay.
I'm not sure that he has yet, but I think there, there was some discussion.
That's what they were leading toward, okay, but Representative Joy, definitely, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and then I wanted to be correct on that. Yeah, and that's, so, oh, and then they had an advisory committee on, I believe it was Friday, Commissioner Mojo and I were able to be there, but getting feedback from it and just let, you know, this advisory committee, which was about ten people or twelve people this year, they just had a nice discussion about the work that Buffalo Red's doing and gave positive feedback to the group, so. And that's my report.
I have no report, but I, I do want to mention, we had some written testimony last week regarding the YES program that was going to be before the Lakes Country Service Cooperative. They did hold their meeting last week, and I, I was out of town, I did not attend. I did receive an email from the executive director that they did vote to close that YES program, I believe it's effective July first. Yeah, I know there's a, you know, there's a lot of, it's been a good program over many years, and I think there, there's been so many new things in the, that have developed new ways for alternative learning that have become available by each district. So the YES program basically served the school districts of Clay County. And, and as I mentioned, I think DGF is starting their own alternative programming next fall, and so, you know, there was, certainly the board had some concerns, but they ultimately voted to close the YES program, so, that's all.
All right, last week, I attended, well, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, which David already reported on. Dave from Morehead State, excuse me, Minnesota State University of Morehead, Morehead, reported that they are putting an art exhibit on by veterans that they're going to display at the, at Morehead State. And Kurt reported on the Vet Court, which they said the last graduate, graduate last Wednesday, I was going to attend that, I got there about a few minutes late, and I just missed graduation, but I did stay for Dr. Court, and they, I mean, they're busy in that Dr. Court, I mean, they had sixteen people that had to be, report there that day, you know, so that judge kept pretty busy there, getting all those people in there, and it looks like you had a pretty good group in there to keep track of. So I guess those are my, yeah, those are the two meetings I had beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and like I said, I attended the Dr. Court, and that was a very interesting presentation there. Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, March seventh, pretty much all day, we had the social workers mediation. We met with the social workers, business agent, stewards, Josh Hagman, our labor attorney, and Anna, myself, and the Bureau of Mediation Services mediator to discuss some outstanding issues with the social workers contract. We did come to some tentative agreements, they're, the members are going to vote on that on March twenty-first, and then I'll bring that to the board on March twenty-eighth, probably in a closed session to begin with, and then we'll vote on that as well. Wednesday, March eighth, we had a manager's meeting, some of the topics we discussed, we just reviewed the procurement policy and the proclamation and resolution policy that I believe was approved by you a couple, last week or a couple weeks ago. We talked a little bit about the management entreat on April twentieth, went through some HR reminders. Steve gave an update on the building, building projects that are ongoing in the substance use facility in the D V, starting, looking at the budgeting process beginning next month in April, and Rory presented a piece on doing more electronic signatures with DocuSign versus SignNow. I think the consensus was that the SignNow was a better product than, than the DocuSign, and cheaper as well. Also on Wednesday, I worked on some costing sheets as a result of the mediation on Tuesday. Also had a discussion with Nick at MCIT on the payroll audit and estimate reports coming up. Thursday, March ninth, I had highway interviews over at the maintenance shop, and we did have a, a good candidate, an offer was made and accepted. That candidate has a CDL Class A already and is also a certified diesel mechanic, so I think we have a good, a very good applicant there. Also on Thursday, I met with Jackie to talk about how HR and her position as the communication coordinator can assist us. She's also setting up meetings with other department heads to, to go over that, so I think that's an ongoing thing. And also on Thursday, continued to work on an ongoing personnel issue. On Friday, March tenth, I spent most of the day creating some preliminary reports for the 2024 budget, and then had a meeting with Steve on some upcoming items while, to watch while he was gone. Yesterday, Monday, March thirteenth, I sat in on the AMC update that they had via Zoom, discussed some personnel issues with one of the department heads, continued work on the preliminary 2024 budget reports, and had a discussion with Justin, reference a accident that happened on Sunday with one of our snowplows and some of the processes that we have to do when that happens. So that is, concludes my report.
Okay, just to remind everybody, next, next Monday, we got the Township Officers meeting.
Correct.
And that's going to be held out at the Sella Way, so the Resource Center, so, a little change of venue there, so just a reminder, that's going to be going on, starting, I suppose, eight-thirty, yeah, okay. Brian, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, no further instructions, Jackie? You sure? Okay, very good. Anybody else? Your turn.